All right, well, let's bring the meeting to order. And the first item on the agenda is the minutes from the September ninth. Meeting. Has everyone had a chance to read the summary? For that meeting, any comments, questions? Changes? All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Been moved?
Second the emotion.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. First item of business is the Raising Canes proposed site development. And I guess Andrew is. Looking to present, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Raising Canes has submitted a site plan number 2024 for approval for a new 3,448 square foot restaurant. The location of the proposed Raising Canes is 400 Angler Road, which is the current site of the Denny's Restaurant. I would like to note also, this will be the first Raising Canes restaurant in the state of Maryland. The site plan is on the screen in front of you. It consists of the restaurant, two drive-through lanes. There's also a dumpster that we will be discussing later. And sidewalk has been provided connecting the restaurant to sidewalk, the new sidewalk that will be located along Baltimore Boulevard, Maryland 14097. For landscaping, working with the applicant has yielded a very nice landscape plan. As you can see, on the left is what was originally proposed and on the right is what is currently being proposed. There are still a couple of things.
Andrew, I'm not, all I'm seeing is the agenda on your screen.
Same here.
Same here.
Sorry about that, how about now?
Ah.
Okay. All right, thank you, sorry about that. Mr. Huff. So this, the site, I guess I'll start with the, back just to the site plan. The site plan, it consists of the restaurant. Also, a sidewalk that connects Raising Canes Restaurant to new sidewalk being proposed along Baltimore Boulevard. There's also the two lane drive-through and the dumpster that will be discussed in more detail coming up. The landscaping, working with the applicant has produced a far better landscaping than what was originally submitted. I would like to thank Raising Canes for that. It did a wonderful job, as you can see, what was on the left was the original proposed. And on the right is what is being currently proposed with the site plan. For landscaping, a couple of things that still need to be complete is some buffering along Angler Road for headlights. And also buffering around the dumpster. The original, the original site development plans elevations may mainly consisted of stucco. I would, working again, just like with landscaping, working with the applicant really provided a wonderful new design. This is what was originally proposed with mostly stucco. And this is what the current proposed design is with a lot of brick. And most, the only real stucco, I believe, still on this is a bow on the top that, that covers and shields the HVAC units. So it's, it's now mostly a brick facade exterior. Also with the signage, the proposed. Freestanding signage on the left is what was originally proposed, more of a, a, a pole sign. And to the right is the monument sign with the brick base to be more architecturally compatible with the new elevations of the proposed building. One of the things that the Planning and Zoning Commission decides approving the site plan, they also will need to approve one sign. That is the 112 square foot Raising Canes Westminster side. That's on the drive-through side facing Baltimore Boulevard, Maryland 14097. The outstanding issues that are, we still had, that, that the applicant would like to bring to the commission. Really has to deal, this has to deal with. In the, in the zoning ordinance where it's safety of pedestrians and motorists and the safe, the optimum safe circulation of traffic within the parking facility. Planning staff, our comment is to relocate the exit only to the highlighted areas and provide applicable tree plantings as required. The applicant met with, at, at first, it was agreeance and the applicant met with the property owner. And I believe there's some issue with the location, but planning staff would still like to see the, the, the. Exit only in that location, and the reason is. Because where it is. I mentioned this to the applicant, if you were to come in and there would be somebody behind you. Somebody who's in, who's proposed, who's going through the drive-through the correct way. Would have to go around the side and come into here. And if somebody would come through the wrong way, they could skirt right in the exit only. And even though you can't stop. Illegal behavior altogether with this proposal, staff thinks that that could sure deter it more. So that is the outstanding issue that we would like to, the Planning and Zoning Commission to also decide on. But our, the staff's recommendation is, planning staff recommends the Planning and Zoning Commission consider conditional approval of proposed site development plan S 2024. Including the proposed 112 square foot Raising Canes Chicken Fingers Westminster wall side with the following conditions. Number one, address all outstanding city and county comments prior to submission of signature set milars. And number two, relocate the exit only pursuant to the October 22, 2021 city comment response letter. Mr. Chair, I'm here if you have any questions and also the applicant is on the call as well, thank you.
Okay. I'm my, I had just a couple of clarification questions before we let the, the applicant's attorney speak. And, and that is on. On the sidewalk that I see, there, there's, there's actually new sidewalk all along 140 as well, is that correct? Is that what I'm seeing there?
You are correct, Mr. Chair, let me go to the slideshow.
Yeah.
There we go, yes, there is also, the sidewalk goes along 140.
Okay, and then, yeah, which was not there, is not currently there, right?
That is correct, Mr. Chair, the applicant is putting that in.
And, and they have, plus they have a zigzag sidewalk to get you up the slope to the, to the backside of the building.
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, on the signs, where, where is the monument sign located?
The monument.
Site plan, I couldn't quite see it.
The monument sign is located, let me, I wonder if I can zoom in here. Actually, let me, Mr. Chair, if I may, let me share the site plan from the staff report. Let me bring that up. So the freestanding monument sign. Will be located right over here on the premises.
Okay.
Right where I is.
It should be visible from 140, I would imagine, is that correct?
Yes, it should, it should be, Mr. Chair, I mean, sorry. Commissioner Huff.
Yep.
Is that a, did Denny's have a sign there as well in that area or?
Denny's does have a sign there, I think it's on, I, I think it's one closer to the Baltimore Boulevard.
Yeah, okay, okay, and then on the, on the sign, that, there's the sign then on the, the other sign you're talking about is attached to the building. But facing out through the drive-through lanes towards 140, is that what that one is?
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay, okay.
And, and the, on the screen, that is sign D.
Right, okay. All right, that's, that was all I needed to, just to clarify. Anyone else just have some clarity questions before we let the?
Yes, I got a clarity question or two. The, for the drive-through, it's a double lane drive-through, how exactly does that work?
I believe, and if the. Ms. Dean is on the call too, if I, if I, if I am a miss, if Ms. Dean, if you could jump in. But I believe you, you would come in and two cars would order here. And then there would be a Raising Canes representative come out and hand deliver the food on the far drive-through closer to Baltimore Boulevard. At this yellow painted striped line with the watch for pedestrian sign.
Oh, yeah, and then times of lower traffic volume, they would merge all into the one drive-through lane at the pickup window. The second lane be for busier times.
So, Ms. Dean, so that's just for when you're really busy, it sort of reminds me, I think Chick-fil-A maybe does something similar.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, that when you're really busy, that you're able to move people through that line more quickly.
Exactly.
And then. Andrew, if you could go back to where, if you could scroll that you could see that exit that you were talking about. That you had some concern, are you going too far, yep. That's the exit out that you're a little bit concerned about with people coming in from 140, I'm assuming. And coming around and then just getting into the drive-through from that location is your concern?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, and I'm sure when the applicant might have some comments on that as well. Okay. I guess that's my question for now, I want the applicant.
Yes, any other clarity questions by anyone? All right, well, let's, let's have. Let's have the applicants, their attorney speak.
Good evening, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm good.
Okay, I apologize, I've got, as, welcome to everyone, good evening, as most of you know, I'm back from maternity leave. This is my first night meeting back, so you might hear a three-month-old screaming upstairs because that's how loud his lungs are. And, and that's the beauty of these virtual meetings, so I apologize for that, but as most of you know, I'm Kelly Shaffer Miller. I represent applicant Raising Canes. And on the call with me, you just heard from Ms. Emily Dean, she's with Kimley Horn, the engineering firm for Raising Canes, as is Davis Walker, who's also on the call. And then we also have Felicia Vivin with us, who's a representative from Raising Canes as well. So they'll jump in to the extent you have any, you know, super technical questions or anything that I can't answer for you. But I did want to just briefly touch on a few things. As Mr. Gray mentioned, we appreciate staff working with Raising Canes and Kimley Horn on this. And there have been a lot of changes to the plans as a result of those meetings and comments. The, the landscaping comments, just briefly, that Mr. Gray raised at the beginning. We believe that either, some of those have been addressed on the most recent submittal, but if not, it, the ones that have not been will be addressed. So it's our understanding that all those will be taken care of. The, as it relates mostly to the relocation of the dumpster. That's a conversation that staff has had, as, as Mr. Gray said, back and forth with both Kimley Horn and Raising Canes. And then Raising Canes in turn has had that conversation with the shopping, with the owner of the shopping center. Because as you can imagine, they've been involved in the review process of the, the layout of the site design. And it's, we understand staff's concern, we do not have, we do not share in that concern. It's, it's Raising Canes, it's in Raising Canes best interest to have a site that works as efficiently and runs as well as possible. And they have taken that into consideration. And the, the relocation of the dumpster is not only objectionable from the landlord of the site. But it also just does not make sense when it comes to the flow of the site or the traffic of the actual trash trucks to enter the site and be able to exit. This site is exceeds the queuing requirements for drive-throughs. So that concern of backing out, of the queue backing out beyond the site, I think is, is not necessarily a legitimate concern for this site specifically. The section of the code that Mr. Gray cites to speaks to public roads as, as this, if this were to. If that point of access, which, sorry, it's not on the screen for you to see right now, but if that exit only, were to exit only onto a public street. That is what the section of the code speaks to. So we don't believe that you have a code obligation, and I'm not suggesting that Mr. Gray was saying that you did. But we do not believe that you have a code obligation to require Raising Canes to move the dumpster. The bottom line is that through the extensive, you know, review. On the part of Raising Canes and Kimley Horn, we really think that the current location is fully appropriate. And that actually the exit only there is a great design because it allows people who perhaps don't want to be in that drive-through to get out of it and exit it. I know that at the, you know, separate from the city, but that was a conversation that came up at the county level when we were looking at the McDonald's down in Sykesville was. A concern that once drivers got into that drive-through, that they'd be locked in and did not have the opportunity to exit. Whereas that at least provides a little bit of a last minute, you know, change of mind. Actually, I don't want to sit in this drive-through line right now and they can get out of it right there. I'm not sure how familiar all of you are with the site. I've only had the opportunity to look at it a little bit more closely recently because of the way I drive my son to school. But if, if you think about those curb cuts that are there and that landscaping, there really is. Quite a bit more room, I guess, than, than it looks on paper. So I don't, I don't think, when you, when you really visualize the site, there, it's close to 140 as you think it is on paper. I will let, if you have any specific questions, I can certainly ask Davis or Emily to jump in on that. But at the end of the day. We respect staff's comments. And, but at the same time, we're respectfully requesting that you take into consideration that Raising Canes has the greatest interest here in having a well-run site. And so that's how they've designed this, is to have that well-run site. We think that the approval here tonight is appropriate as it is. If, if you are inclined to condition this approval on anything, we would ask that the conditions be limited to those landscaping comments that Mr. Gray includes in the staff report. Because we are confident that we either have addressed them on the most recent submittal or Mr. Gray will see them addressed on the next submittal. But our goal here tonight is to get a finally approved site plan that we can confidently, I would say, walk out of the room, but that's not the case tonight. You know, have in hand and we can get another submittal into city staff and then hopefully, you know, proceed forward with the rest of the legal process and, and permitting process. So it's our request that you approve the site plan that's been presented to you. And if you are inclined to place any conditions on the approval, the conditions be limited to just addressing those landscaping comments that are contained in the staff reports. And like I said, we are all here, we're happy to dive into a lot more details if you want them, but I don't want to, you know, overwhelm or deter from the bigger issues.
I have a question or two, I guess. Could you pull up on the screen, the, the drawing again, Andrew?
Yes, sir.
You can all see it. With the layout. Okay, so I, I thought your concern, our staff's concern was that people that are coming. In the, from the 140 direction into the site and headed to the drive-through instead of going. All the way around to the drive-through would come through what that exit only is going to be, is that not correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Is, as designed, I, I can also see Ms. Miller's point as far as the standpoint. That it is, you know, also nice to have an exit there as you're coming through that site for someone who, you know, you have parking spaces there. And someone who wants to come by and get out of that site, also with the dumpster truck coming in to pick up the, the trash. There to be able to pick up the trash and then kind of back up a little bit and then come out of that exit there too. I can see the, you know, the concern of that point. On the plan. Is there a do not enter sign there or prominent do not enter sign there? Because I, you know, I know we can't ensure that somebody won't come through there, but if it's well marked, one would hope they would not.
Yes, there are two, there will be two do not enter signs, striping and on pavement marking that says do not enter.
Okay, so you're planning to make that very clear, that is not, not to come in that way?
Absolutely.
Okay. The idea of moving that exit to the other side of the dumpster is just problematic from a design standpoint, is that what your contention is?
I think it's two-part, and I'll let Davis jump in if he's got additional to add, but I think, yes, it's a design standpoint and it's also objectionable to the landlord. And they're not willing to, it's my understanding that they're not willing to consent to that changing, that, that point. If you're familiar, the Denny's site has that same spot, but right now it's two-way. So what Raising Canes would be doing would be making it one way and doing all of the striping and marking that we just talked about. So it's, it's, it's two-part, it's both design of the site, because we looked at, and David, again, I'm not the engineer, so please jump in. But I believe we looked at moving the dumpster even put, like possibly all the way over. And there's just no other location that we believe works with the, the site flow, the way it is shown to you here tonight.
So the landlord, I would put that exit on the other side of the dumpster. The landlord didn't really like it dumping off into the middle of that. Because obviously they have parking on the other side, is that what your point is, Ms. Miller? Okay. Okay.
Is, is there, there really isn't a design that would show if the dumpster was, you would slide, what the city was. I didn't really get a very good look at the city's drawing, but they didn't really show you sliding the dumpster. They just showed putting parking to the right of the dumpster, right? You didn't, you did not.
Well, I'm sorry, reorienting that, the access point, I guess, right?
Yeah.
Where, where that yellow is, is where the exit would be, is that what you're proposing, Andrew?
That, yeah.
Yes, yes, sir.
So, and then.
That couldn't really be done that way, right? Because you, you know, if that's the full width, you're losing parking spaces, you have to put them.
That is correct, that is correct.
That's why you have to slide the.
The dumpster is where.
Why you try to slide the dumpster?
That is correct.
And then you, I don't know if you'd even, yeah.
Well, and one comment, just in full disclosure, having dealt with commercial sites myself. The one potential issue with having the exit where the yellow is. That I foresee is the vehicle that's picking up the trash would then have to back up further. And then navigate out that way, which I think is a little bit difficult and problematic unless someone wants to correct me on that.
That, that is correct with our, with our trash truck.
Yeah, it, it would be problematic, I would imagine.
Yeah, so we, that, that was, as you know, Kelly had mentioned, the, the site flow. It, moving it there, just the site flow doesn't work because of that, with that being, you know, one of the main concerns is the trash truck. As well as, you know, the exit would be 20 feet from the other exit. And, you know, and, and losing the parking spaces and the objectionable, you know, there's.
The one, I, I guess, let everybody think about that for a little, I had one additional question, and that is, having. Gone through a few. Drive-throughs, sometimes, and I could see this being a potential, I like that drawing back up there, Drew.
That one, Mr. Chair?
Well, that, that's, the other one you had is fine, the one with the yell is fine, just so everybody can think about that while I'm asking my question. But when you're coming through to leave, it's always a little. You know, are you leaving or are you in the, one of the drive-through lanes? And I'm just wondering, is there room for, at that tight little spot where your drive, where the double drive-through lanes stop? And you have, you have traffic flow shown and, actually in two directions. Wouldn't it be better to have all the traffic flowing towards the exit? And then, and instead of in two directions, right on the other side of that dumpster, you see where the arrows go both directions there?
But isn't that just referring to where the park, the people that are parked, that if they're backing out, they can go that other direction as well, I, I think that's the indication of that?
I know, but I'm just thinking, why, why, you're, you're kind of going, putting a counter to the flow into your, what I'm thinking if, is if your drive-up traffic backs up a little bit around that corner. Or something like that, you, it would, I don't know that you want those people backing out, backing in towards the drive-through traffic. It seems like you'd want to go through that existing exit that's sitting there in a way. But I, what I was wondering is if you're coming through to leave out that exit. Is there enough room for three lanes of traffic through there, one for each drive-through lane? And, and then one for the exit, or is it, is it more likely going to be one drive-through lane? Sort of between the dumpster and those parking lots, one drive-through lane and then one exit lane? Is that sort of more how it's designed for, two, two lanes through there? In my mind, they'd both be heading left to the exit. Although one would be heading for the drive-through lanes and one would be people that want to leave. Is that, I just, I didn't know quite how.
There is two lanes, that's correct, we wish there, we had room for three. Believe me, but unfortunately, our basic constraints do not.
Seems like you, you'd want to have. I don't think you'd want that, that one exit lane there, going to be an either or for the drive-through or the, or the. Exit, it seems like it would be nice to have two lanes heading to the, towards the drive-through. And one would, the traffic would turn into the driving lanes and the other, the traffic would leave, you know what I mean?
My one comment though about that, Mr. Beaver, is that, you know, it's pretty, those, that drive-through lane looks pretty long. So I mean, I think unless it's really high intensity use, you know, during lunch and dinner, they're probably only going to have one of the drive-through lanes open at one time, is that correct?
That is, that is correct, and you know, just as Kelly had mentioned, it, it is in our best interest. The more people we get through our drive-through faster. You know, the more, you know, beneficial toward, to the business it is. So, you know, our drive-through system, yes, we have the two lanes for when it's. At peak capacity to try to get more people through the lines as quick as possible. We have two menu order boards and order points. And then. We also will have the option of handheld order points of, you know, with, you know, team members with, you know, a iPad. To move, walk up and down to the cars, help move that through as fast as possible. So it, you know, we do, we do everything and trying to plan for everything to make sure that.
I understand, I understand that, and I understand, you know, it'll be one drive-through when it's slow, might be two when it gets busy. At some point, between the time it's slow and it's busy, you know, one, the single one might fill up. All, all I was just thinking was this, this arrow above the handicap spaces that points to the right. It just seemed to me that having the flow in that area all going to the left, where you could have one, one road traffic going to the left closest to the handicap parking. Beheading through the drive-through, that was in effect be, beheading towards the drive-through. One or two lanes, whatever it is, and the second lane, which is on the dumpster and could be the one where people could, could leave the site. And assuming you don't back cars up out of your, out of your drive-through lanes, the handicap people won't have any more or less trouble getting out of their spot. And they can kind of go toward, it's a quicker way out towards the parking lot, they won't have to go back on the site and, and make a left turn, you know, to get out, that's all I was thinking. It's a quicker way out towards the parking lot. They won't have to go back on the site and and make a left turn, you know, to get out. That's all I was saying.
But I I guess, Mr. Beaver, though, I I. You know, if I'm in that parking space, let's say I'm in that handicap parking space. What would be the problem for me to go to the right?
I'm just trying to get him out quicker.
I'm sorry.
I'm trying to get him to leave the site quicker and not be in the way of other other traffic.
Yeah, but I mean, that's assuming a lot of backup, like that you would need two full left lanes there. I kind of.
No, I'm not, I'm not worried about the the drive-through at all. There there's, I'm not worried about drive-through at all. I'm just saying, just to get them off the site.
Yeah, but they could go.
The exit is right there and they can just leave.
Yeah, but they can go either way right now. I mean, they could go to that exit uh that's by the dumpster or they could go the other direction. I mean.
If you don't follow the arrow.
Well, I'm gonna put my entirely common sense perspective in here, not my engineering hat whatsoever. So so ignore anything that's not engineering correct, but um to me. It's I agree with Mr. Beaver that I think they're naturally gonna want to go out that exit only if it's. If they can easily get out there, but I don't think that there's any way to easily. Mark or indicate that just those few spots are subject to a one-way traffic pattern, if you will. Um, because that would, that's effectively what you'd be doing is saying that just those handicap spots no longer have that two-way ability. Because they've come so far into the site and I think that's just, uh, that's a tough ask and. And as Mr. Huff has been kind of pointing out that during the slower periods, if they want to go out the other way. Uh, you know, why not let them have that extra access? Extra access is usually a good thing.
Saying that they'll they'll be able to go in either direction they want from the handicap spots?
Currently, yeah.
Which case, I wouldn't market, I wouldn't market at all and let the traffic flow how it flows.
Well, I think I, well.
Those errors are more for our benefit than they are actual errors, I believe. Yeah.
I wasn't sure. I I was thinking, I was suggesting if you had both errors going to the left, you might could have one designated more for. The drive-through lane and the second arrow closer to the dumpster would be more through exit lane, you know what I mean? And you'd have, you'd have a an easy flow exit lane going around and then you'd have the other lane for the uh to hit the two drive-through lanes. That's. That's really what I was.
Those errors aren't actually on the parking lot, Mr. Beaver, unless I'm wrong about that.
That they we we will be, we will be striping.
I was guessing.
Flow arrows.
They should put the arrows.
We will be, we will be striping flow arrows.
Okay, you will be, okay.
And um. These are all valid points and these, these are all valid points and they're things that um we talk about almost daily. And so, you know, on, you know, Mr. Beaver, you're absolutely right. You know, it does, it would seem to make sense that at that point from the handicap on to go, but everything to the left. You know, to give that option, um, however. You know, the double-edged sword, Mr. Huff, you're right as well, I guess, both, everybody could be right. Um, when what what our history has shown and and actuality is if you point. If you have ninety-degree spaces and it or and or a twenty-four-foot-wide drive aisle. Cars are gonna go whatever way they want to, if there's no, if there's no one around. So um that. You guys are having to having to battle it. We 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 talk about all the time, so I'm glad to see that other people think are, you know, kind of think about this as well too.
Yeah, well, and I, yeah, I gotta, hey, I, you know.
I I.
Ultimately, we had, we had thoughts when the uh, the um. Coffee, coffee place went up at the other corner of Malcolm Drive and, you know. Things and things are sort of uh trying to change there now because you could kind of foresee things, but it's easier maybe to build them and then things evolve and. You can always change the striping later if it works.
Well, unless, let's also just very clearly delineate between the two because. This site is much different than what Mr. Beaver just mentioned and this site is very well accommodated.
That one was very difficult.
Um, so let's not even make that comparison or, you know, uh, we'll get the Facebook community all riled up here. So and right now they want chicken things, so let's keep it that way.
All right. Well, without seeing what the design would look like on that dumpster, it's a little hard to, you know. Agree to have you change anything is there's a little, it's a little difficult to see what you, you know, how how it would actually look and, you know. What what problems exactly it would uh it would create for you.
Well, and let me also just, Mr. Beaver, that brings up a good point, which I think is is a is a quick summation, which is just that the concern here. Express by staff relates to public safety and the public safety concern is. We're concerned that citizens are going to illegally go in that exit only and. I, well, you know, we respect staff comments and we're, we certainly can't sit here and say, no one's ever going to violate a traffic sign. Um, but I don't think that that concern warrants the redesign of this site. Um, I don't think you can, you can say that based upon an assumption that people are going to illegally. Um, move through traffic that that warrants Raising Cane's redesigning their site. So so again, you know, not to get too legal on you, but from more of a legal perspective. That's why, that's one of the reasons that we're asking for this approval and we can get a legitimate request. Um, as the site has already been designed.
Yeah, I I hear I hear you. And to be honest, if the site came in and it didn't have the exit at all. I don't know, and you said that's the way it had to be. I don't know that we would have any uh. My thinking is, I don't know we'd have any problem with it if you only had one egg combination exit entrance. If that's all you had room to put in and and everyone was okay with it, I'm not sure we have a problem if there wasn't an an exit there, you know.
Well, Ms. Ms. Miller, I will say, not to get into an argument, a legal argument with you, but um. I mean, I think if we wanted to, as a planning commission, you know, we have site plan approval. If we wanted it in a certain location, we could certainly do that. Um, but I I actually, you know, I. And I'd like to hear from my other planning commission members in this regard. I understand what staff concern is, but I also understand what your all's concern is, and I think. Uh, at the end of the day, I. Moving the exit to the other side of the dumpster, I think is a little bit problematic from the flow of the the. The tr- the 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 trash truck picking up the trash and being able to get out of the site successfully without having to back back way out. Uh, to to go through where the the yellow is on there. Um, and, you know, no site is ever quite perfect. I think if there's good signage there. You know, as as much as maybe I would like to see something else, um, I don't think it's the end of the world. That's my. You know, humble, honest opinion, but I kind of would like feedback from the other planning commission members if anyone else wants to speak up what they think. With particularly with that exit um and the idea of doing a redesign of where that exit is. Does anyone else have any comments besides Mr. Beaver?
I agree with Commissioner Hoff. I think it looks fine the way it is.
Anybody else?
I would say the same thing.
Okay.
Yeah, I sort of agree. I think if someone's gonna sneak in the entrance, they they'll do it either whether you new entrance or the old entrance.
Do you think it is well, well-marked and if staff is telling us it is well-marked, I I just. When they're finalizing the plans, I I just want that to be clear cuz I do see their concern about someone coming in there and trying to jump the queue. Um, but I just, I don't know how you move the exit to the other side and. I I I think moving the exit to the other side creates other problems. Um, so I, you know.
All right.
Anyway. Andrew, what was the list of what you wanted us to potentially make the motion on? So that's in front of us.
Sorry, I haven't, I am, I was muted. Um, for addressing all outstanding city and county comments prior to submitting the milars. And then also relocating the exit. A part of addressing all outstanding in city and county comments would be also the hundred and twelve square foot signage. There and and also just a clarification from what Michelle from Miller mentioned. Um, there is also, uh, there were no modifications submitted to the development design preference manual, so there would, there would be items. In the landscape manual, or I should say, city zoning ordinance, landscape manual and development design preference manual. That would still have to be addressed. The comments from in the development design preference manual were in the staff report. Sent out to the commission on um on Monday.
And to clarify, um, because perhaps I was not clear at the beginning. Uh, we are requesting that you approve the plan that you've seen here tonight. Subject to the landscaping comments that are contained in the staff report. There are three design preference manual comments that are in the staff report. Um, and the reason I didn't address them initially is just because, um, well, Mr. Gray just pointed them out extra, so I I'll go through them quickly with you. Though first relates to photometric plan. Um, there is a photometric plan within the site plan itself. It is on sheet thirty-eight. Of the actual plan sets and I believe it's on page twenty-two of the staff report packet. Um, it shows that the site is fully lit, which I believe is what that comment relates to. Um, number two, comment number two, that can, we can certainly provide that on the plans. That was a comment about the, I believe, native species. Of plants on the site and then comment number three related to the irrigation system. And that is, we we cannot provide a zero escape. This will be an irrigated site that will use an efficient irrigation system that uh Davis can get into if you have specific details. But um as we've, we've had many over several months of the planning commission as as I've submitted to you. On several occasions, there's no specific modification request required for anything that does not meet the design preference manual. The design preference manual itself says that it's not a legislative uh document and that it's to guide design. So our request to you. Is that you approve the plan that's been presented before you, um, understanding our response to these comments. Um, but that you condition that approval on the landscaping comments because those comments are more are mandatory, if you will, comments. That, as I stated at the beginning, we believe we either have or certainly can show on the plan, no problem there, Mr. Gray, so those will be addressed.
And Miss.
Yeah. Why would we not just follow staff's recommendation on those three items and. Um, I mean, I I would assume that between staff and the developer, you know, we're giving approval. And that you can, you all can work out the particulars of that. Someone needs to explain the irrigation system thing to me a little bit better. I don't know what that particular comment gets to.
And if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
In the city code, it mentions that site plans must um address the development design preferences. Um, the first comment is about pedestrian-oriented lighting that would be out at the outdoor patio. Um, also, um, just the second would be a a um. Uh, essentially a note mentioning that they will provide fifty percent of the um area with native or adaptive species. And for number three, as the Planning and Zoning Commission is well aware of. Because there is a water allocation and the city, as you know, allocates water. Um, on a a as-needed basis, very conservatively, we would not want an irrigation system to. Water plants, so be basically, you know, we would be using our precious water resources. For watering landscaping where landscaping should be native or adaptive to the Maryland climate. So there there is in the city zoning ordinance mentioned that the site plan has to address development design preference manual, just to. Um, um, you know, just uh for clarity on that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right.
Mr. Chair, to respond to your question, um, Mr. Huff, the. I don't want to get into too much of of the global conversation here, but the section of the code that requires developers to look at. Um, and developers and the planning commission to look at the development design preference manual is one sixty-four, one thirty-one point two. And it talks about the manual um sh- shall be utilized by planning commission essentially to look at designs and see if they're good designs. Um, and then the manual itself talks about being a guide to to, again, good design in the city. Not necessarily, and it very specifically even says in the intro of the of the manual, that it's not necessarily to say that. This in concrete creates the best design. It's to look at this to guide good design and so.
Respectfully, respectfully, Ms. Miller, um. If we're gonna go down that road, then, you know, potentially, I think we're trying to get. I don't think this is a big deal for us to approve it with these conditions and let you and the developer work that out. If we're gonna get into a legal debate, I mean, I guess we can postpone this and I will have legal counsel come on to represent the planning commission. To address your concerns, but I don't understand why we're going down this path anyway.
I I absolutely do not think we need to get into a legal discussion, Mr. Huff. It's really as it relates to comment number three and perhaps Davis can ju- jump in and explain the irrigation system a little bit more. Um, I will note briefly that in the staff report, the water conversation notes. That the new youth is actually using far less water than the existing water envelope for the site, so we understand that concern.
Well, I will tell you, Ms. Miller, water allocation is extremely important to the city of Westminster and the last thing I want is water. Going out irrigating plants when I have to turn away certain development projects in the city because I don't have water.
Mr. Huff, I completely understand and given that that's not my specialty, I would would love if you would hear. Mr. Uh Davis Walker on just how it works, just the the basics of the irrigation system. Or Miss Emily Dean, I'm sorry.
There you go. Sorry, I was on, I was on, I was on mute. Uh, yes, so. As you know, we've talked about before, you we have gone back and forth with with staff and we have provided. You know, a very lush landscape system and or landscape uh palette and material. Overs, and the next mission, you'll see this, Mr. Gray, over sixty percent of our plants are native as defined by the. U S Fish and Wildlife uh publication for the Maryland uh region for and. So that is, and then the others are, you know, locally adapted species that that do well in in this climate. Um, however, you know, we are putting a large investment into the landscaping and so we do want to ensure. You know, the survivability of that to just in case. So our landscape syst- or irrigation system. Will have a smart controller to that. There is going to be soil moisture meters, you know, as um. You know, plants pick up nutrients that that comes through the uh the roots, the plants in the soil. And so there will be a soil, you know, soil sensor items as well as a rain sensor, so you're not gonna see any. Irrigating while rain's going on. It's not gonna irrigate what if there's sufficient uh moisture within the soil, so we, it will be a very. Water-wise irrigation system to be, you know, presented in 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 the landscape.
And Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, Andrew.
I am almost certain that every single development project that has come through the commission in the last several years. Has mentioned that there will be no irrigation system. So I'm, I guess my my thought is if every other development in Westminster that's come. Has said no irrigation system. I mean, I I believe this can as well, and I reiterate, um, would like to re- reiterate what what Commissioner Huff said. I mean, it's. Staff has recommended conditional approval, um, and and with, there there were no modifications to the development design preference manual as. Mentioned that in the code that the Planning and Zoning Commission shall utilize this, even in the Planning and Zoning Commission Rules of Order and Procedure, it mentions. To utilize the rule, the development design preference manual. So I just don't see. Uh, personally, why a irrigation system would be needed on this proposal as all other proposals that have come before this board, since the. The um water and sewer allocations policy was adopted by the Mayor and Common Council, they did not need one.
Mr. Depot, are you on the on the phone?
Yeah, yes, can can you hear me?
Yes, can you speak to this whole irrigation uh because the water allocation that that was provided to Raising Cane. Um, was not based on any kind of irrigation. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Absolutely. Right now, the water and sewer allocation application was the restaurant only. Any change to that would be a new application, so. The planning image could not approve this tonight because it would not meet the allocation application that we worked with Raising Cane or. So we were not provided any data as to water usage. We'd have to understand that. So if this is the case, I would recommend that we continue this as we can work with raising. So if this is the case, I would recommend that we continue this as we can work with Raising Cane for the um water allocation.
So, because the the, can you bring back up that screen? Um Andrew, that you just with devotion on it or the zero with the design. What exactly is that referring to indicated on the uh X E R scape?
Zero escape is no irrigation system essentially.
Okay.
We're not wasting city water because we've allocated, we have a certain amount of water for commercial industrial uses, restaurant uses and so forth. And we did not contemplate a water irrigation system. Uh we would, I I don't think we would have allocated water for a water irrigation system.
Can I, can I ask a question of Raising Cane?
Sure.
Um, do all of your restaurants have this irrigation system?
Yes, that's correct.
Hi. The the reason that I'm asking is because when we determined the water envelope, we looked at all of the other restaurants and their water usage. So I just wanted to see if by doing that, if I had looked at it, not knowing, you know, uh I was just curious about. If this is something that they're only doing in the city of Westminster or if this is something that they do for everyone so that we can consider it. If if the commission decides to grant conditional approval when we have these discussions on how to move forward with yeah, zero escape, we can talk about that.
Well, uh what what I ideally would like to do here today personally is get planning commission approval and let staff and raising cane. Subsequent to our conditional approval. Address these other issues because um staff knows as as being on city council. And Chair of Economic and Community Development, how I feel about water. We don't have enough of it, and I don't like turning people away. And it puts me in an awfully bad position when when, you know, I'm, we're giving away water allocation for someone to, you know, water their plants. I I just don't like it. But what what I would like to potentially do here today is go ahead and give the conditional approval. And and let staff raising cane work to address these issues so that we don't have to come back here. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Depot, that was the goal today to get out of here. And then you guys can resolve this behind the scenes. Is that not correct?
Well, a- absolutely, the hope was, I mean, and it also goes back to the entrance, which I I wish I had a chance to speak about that. Um but no, was the hope to get them through the approval subject to addressing these final elements. Um of the development, which we didn't think were significant and could be resolved. Um but again, if it if we're looking at something that we didn't review and didn't take into account, that's concerning.
The irrigation system, well, first of all, I just want to briefly say that there, Mr. Huff, when it comes to the water allocation. I understand your concerns and I also understand your involvement in the water allocation system and your knowledge of that. Um I do want to point out, just for everyone know, that this site did not require a new water allocation. So you would not be um unless the irrigation system is something I'm unaware of in terms of quantity here, which it sounds like it's not. Um you would not be granting a new water allocation for use of an irrigation system. Um so we would not want you to be in that position and we're not asking you to be in that position. Uh Denny's had an existing water envelope. And when, and and again, please Andrea Davis, jump in on to the extent I'm misstating this. But it's my understanding that to calculate the water usage for this site. Uh city staff worked with Kim Lee Horn and Raising Cane to look at several other comparable Raising Cane sites and their water usage. To determine what was appropriate for this site. And I appreciate Andrea's question because um that kind of just made me think of something too that I hadn't, which is that was. Calculated within those other by looking at those not, it was not done intentionally. But by looking at the other comparable restaurants, that water was calculated. I'd also just, and this is for my own education, I mean, Davis kind of alluded to it, but I guess maybe I'm not understanding. Do we think we, I mean, what's the relationship between maintaining the landscape? The extra landscaping that we've provided and the need for this irrigation system?
Sounds to me like it might be a fairness issue if no one else is uh being allowed to put irrigation in. Who's building a project similar to yours?
One thing I do want to mention though about the irrigation. If we're talking about consistent irrigation, you know, for the life of the project, that's different than if you're putting a note on the plan that says, you know, for the first. Whatever, six months, nine months, you're gonna water. Because whenever you have new plantings, you got to water them until they get established. So there, again, I think on a staff level, between the applicant and staff, we can kind of work through that whole irrigation issue. To make sure that, you know, it works that, of course, you don't put in landscaping and then lose it because you're in a. Uh a really dry time and you need it to water it to establish it. That's different than having long term irrigation year after year just because you want it to look, you know, pristine. Um is my comment in that regard.
Mr. Huff, we have no opposition to working with staff. I think as as Mr. Gray um pointed out initially, there's been a lot of working with staff on this project. Um so I I mean, unless I'm speaking out of turn, Davis, we have no opposition to working with staff. We are just trying to avoid a situation where we can't come up with some kind of agreement and or some kind of agreement delays the actual permit. Because it's great to, it's great to get an approval here tonight. But if the conditions result in six months of back and forth, and again, I'm just throwing out numbers, you know, that's not effective. You see what I'm saying, Mr. Huff? So that's what we're trying to eliminate. We're not trying to eliminate working with staff or coming up with solutions to these.
If it takes that long, you can personally call me on my cell phone, okay?
Well, I, I have a solution to that, meet the.
What's your number?
I, but I I have a, I have a solution.
She has it.
The ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Depot, yes.
Uh well, I disagree with Ms. Schaefer's uh comment that these are not requirements. They certainly are, we've had this discussion, I've talked to city council. Um we can, I can talk to her again, but these aren't regulations, they need to meet. If the planning commission wants them to irrigate, you would have to approve the irrigation and modify that requirement. It specifically states in the design manual, things that can't be meet may be modified by the planning commission. That itself makes these standards. If they were not standards, there would not be a need for modifications by the planning commission. So if the planning commission chooses to modify that requirement and allows zero escaping, that is certainly up to the commission.
So I I think, um you know, I pulled up the design preference manual here on page forty. Part of zero escaping says efficient irrigation systems, number two, right there at the bottom of the page.
All right, have we, Davis, are you telling me that we've been arguing over something that is actually allowed?
Yes, efficient irrigation systems are allowed by the design preference manual, two thousand sixteen, page fourteen says efficient irrigation systems.
Let me. Let me look, hold on one second, let me bring up the landscape manual. Because it does mention about zero escape.
The landscaping or the design preference?
Sorry, the design preference manual.
And I apologize, this should have been a discussion we had before the planning commission. If I thought it was an issue, if the applicant raised this issue clearer, we would not be here tonight.
Because if I may.
Would not be having this discussion tonight.
Because, Mr. Chair, if I may. If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I did not know about this irrigation system before this meeting tonight. Actually, the first I heard about it is when you all heard about it.
Okay.
So that's disappointing, this, we've been working with the applicant very closely. And had we known this, we would not, I would not be here tonight. So if if we could, if we if we don't want to wait six months, as Ms. Schaefer Miller mentioned. Let's hold off and let staff work with the applicant and come back to the planning commission next month. Not six months, it's one month and finalize these issues that.
That may be the best choice because we're, if we're gonna start arguing over the legality of the documents, I don't think we want to be involved in that tonight.
I I agree, I agree. And I I thought this was a clean plan, but it it doesn't look that way.
And if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Um on page forty, integrate zero escaping into landscape plans. Irus- zero escape is not a landscape style or garden design. Zero escape is a concept of water conservation that may be applied to landscape of any style.
It, I mean, I'm just.
And the next bullet point says the seven principles of zero escaping are?
Efficient irrigation system. So it sounds like perhaps the manual itself is just not well written, not up to date, whatever it is, contrary, contrary. Um so um I'm not trying to get into a legal discussion. I've been out of this plan for the past three and a half months. So I'm, I'm a little bit unsure as to what was and was not discussed in meetings during that time. I'm not sure what's shown on our plan. I'm sure Davis can speak more in detail as to whether the zero state or the, I'm sorry, the irrigation system has been on the plans, is clearly on the plans, all those sorts of details. Um but I'm gonna defer to Felicia and Davis as to whether we think it's appropriate to to explain the irrigation system more, talk through this right now. Or if we do need to go back, um Davis, ha- you know, do we think we can hash this out with staff? Is this something you feel you have discussed with staff and that's why we're here? Can you explain that?
I think we can hash that with staff.
Okay, so do Davis, is it your position that we should discuss this with staff and return at next month?
Uh I'm gonna defer to Felicia on that one. I I think we can um more go within approval today, you know, with our, as the plan is shown.
With the condition, because it sounds like our two options, and again, I'm not trying to put words in anybody's mouth. But it sounds like the two options we're kind of being presented with is wait a month, see if we can work through this. And either come to planning commission with more of an explanation as to what this manual language means and how we're meeting it. Or subject ourselves here tonight to the condition that we address this comment with staff.
Yeah, we don't exactly.
Not necessarily my decision to make, Davis, that's a.
We don't really know.
Might, might I recommend, might I recommend that the planning commission, if they, if they so choose. Approve the condition, approve the site plan subject to the conditions that Andrew Gray pointed out. We can certainly work with the applicant to address those. If we can't come to an agreement, we can certainly come back next month to the planning commission. If we can come to an agreement, then we can move forward internally and um approve this plan. So give, give staff a chance to work with the applicant and address these again. If there's a, if there's a concern, we'll bring it back.
Mr. De, I appreciate that suggestion, thank you.
Mr. Depot, I like that suggestion because we can go ahead, get it approved tonight. And if for some reason staff and the applicant can't get through the details and then technically you have to come back. For planning commission to make a decision one way or the other, then we can do that. But to me, you know, at least we're trying to speed up the process and keep it moving. With the hope that staff and the applicant can iron through these details. Because personally, when I read the report, I didn't think these were big stumbling blocks.
Um. It it a- absolutely, that's, that's why I offer this. We've been working really well with the applicant, they've done a great job with this site. Um we can't say enough good things about this property and this development. So I I think we can.
We're excited to have them here in Westminster, definitely, yes.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Any other commission members have any other comments?
Lindy?
I think, I think that's gonna be a good compromise to approve it as it is based on the fact that they will work with uh our planning department. Is that the way I understand it?
Yes, can I just clarify that we're still requesting that you approve it without the uh move, without moving that exit lane? Subject to the other conditions within the staff for requesting that you approve and um without the exit lane changing location.
Mr. Depot, do you have any strong?
Oh, I, I, and I, I do, and I've met, I've mentioned this to the applicant. Um just dealing with the current problems we had with the Starbucks, I know you don't want to talk about it. And now Chick-fil-A, yes, they were designed as this is how we have done it in the past. And we're now seeing as times are changing and people are changing and how they operate. That we're seeing that the past queuing lanes and issues aren't the same. They're much more of an issue, that's why we had Starbucks come back and add a second lane. That's why Chick-fil-A is asking to come back and redesign their site because of queuing issues. So that was my concern, the reason, the primary reason here is the lack of the ability to move the dumpster. We offered net several locations, they they could move the dumpster out of its location, which could resolve this. But it was an issue of having their staff walk a little bit further to the dumpster location, and that's not typical. So we we offered several other locations for dumpsters that would have resolved this issue. But they felt that they they wanted to keep the dumpster where it is and maintain this design. Um so we we did talk a lot about um how this could be a better situation. My concern is exactly as uh uh Commissioner Beaver brought up and 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 Councilmember Huck brought up. Those handicap spots, that's right at the nexus of the beginning, the queuing lanes, the backing out of of the state, the the spaces. People pulling into that exit only, if a car pulls in, it blocks everything. And and I believe the queuing is gonna back up even further. So I I think we're creating a sig- a problem we're gonna see in the future that we're gonna get complaints about and have to fix. If the applicant believes there's a resolution or a way to fix in the future, great. Um what we try to do is try to plan better now. And that's what we were looking at, and that was the concern, is that everything is happening in this one. Like I said, nexus of 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 uh elements of um collectively creating an issue. So that's, that was their concern, and that's why we tried to move it, that's why we tried to move the dumpster location. Um to create a better issue. Um so that's, that was a concern. But again, as mentioned, end of the day, if it happens, if there's a failure. Uh and they need to come back and fix it, they would come back and fix it.
And we really do not want to be in the position of having a failure, Mr. Depot, as I'm sure you know, that's not the position we want to be in.
I know, I I believe there will be, but that's, but again, again, that's if, and and this is a viable site, if you, if I, if you may, it's, it it can be. Altered in the future. What we try to do is try to plan for now. Um but as the applicant did mention, if there was a need in the future, they can certainly try to rework it.
Yeah. Abs- I mean, absolutely, nobody wants a failing site, right? Um and I do, I I know you said you knew that I didn't want you to compare it to Starbucks. Um but just, just to reiterate, this is very different, very different than Starbucks. It's also very different, I would submit to you, than the Chick-fil-A site because just by nature of the location of it.
You'll be busier.
And and I will also reiterate that they meet the standard, the the queuing requirements. They meet all of the code requirements, so there is no failure of meeting requirements here.
I know, I know, but again, talking to State Highway, all those queue requirements are now failing. So of the, the thing is.
Wait for your code to rewrite.
And Ms. Miller, I'm on, I'm on the side that I hope they do so well, they do have a queuing issue. So I, so I I hope it does, but again.
Mr. Depot, could I suggest that we kind of do something similar is that I think you heard from the. The planning commission that, you know, there was some, if. That, you know, we could live with it in the location it is, but if there's a better, something better that staff and the applicant can come up with that makes everybody happy. I I think that the planning commission would be happy with that as well. Can can I suggest that we, you know, I know it's kind of getting convoluted, but you know, conditionally approve it based off of. You know, the staff and the applicant trying to work out that issue. And again, whatever issues can't get worked out, then if we gotta come back to planning commission next month, not six months from now. Um, Ms. Miller, um that we do it that way, does that work? I'm just trying to get to a resolution here.
I I I would like another chance, I I'm happy to hear that the applicant did make the statement that. Um if there was an issue in the future that they would rework the site. So that was good to hear. So I I would like, we we didn't get too much back of a redesign from the previous discussion we had with the applicant. I would like to get a little bit better understanding. I would like to get a little bit better understanding of what they looked at and what they tried to do. Um, to get a better feeling that there was an effort made. And again, look at, this might be a solution in the future, but right now we go with the plan we have today. That it, there is a possibility that there is, if there is a failure, an issue, this, we can demonstrate a fallback plan. So I would, I would like a little bit, uh, uh, that ability to work with the applicant. Um, if, if the staff feels comfortable and the applicant has stated that there's clearly the ability to redesign, if there is an issue, then staff would be more than happy to approve the site plan.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I would just like to reiterate what Mr. Devoe said. Raising Canes, Emily and her team have been wonderful to deal with.
I, I understand. And I'm, I think we're about ready to wrap this up. I, I think it's, I think, assuming we can get a motion worded by Mr. Huff. It'll be.
I was trying to say, this motion, this motion is going to be interesting and I will, I just, I wanna, I do, I do want to say that, Mr. Huff, we are, as we've said, we are, we are happy to work with staff. I do think we have exhaustively tried, um, and looked at, and also discussed with landlord, the potential site redesign, um, to accommodate staff's concerns and that it just will not work. Which is why we're still asking you to approve it without that condition. Um, but we are happy to explain all of those efforts in more detail to staff. We're still happy to have the conversation with staff, but we would ask that you approve it with the conditions that Mr. Gray listed related to landscaping. And then, um, as Mr. Depot, um, kind of phrased it, although I'm, I'm forgetting exactly how he put it, but, you know, looking at the design preference manuals and trying to come up with the best solution there, um, in the hopes that we can not come back to this commission next month. But, you know, use that as a worst case, if you will, not that we don't love seeing you all, but as a worst case scenario.
I'm not sure how Mr. Huff will phrase the dumpster area, but I, I would, I would say this, and it's, it was a little difficult for us to even be thinking about that when we hadn't seen the other potential locations that supposedly weren't acceptable or not. But I, but I would, would say this to the design people is that, that we have seen sites like this that haven't, that, that we've anticipated there were going to be problems, but it met all these quote standards. And we said, well, it's your problem, I guess, if, if it happens and, and then you'll have to deal with it. And we've seen some of that happening. And I just give you that as history that, that the guys looking at it aren't necessarily just trying to find something to complain about. They really have, have seen things and there's things they're looking at that they feel like could, is, could potentially be a, create another problem. So you just may want to relook at that and just say, what if they're right? And we have to do it later. Would it be better to do something now and, and try to, uh, or, or, or if we, if we're not, then what are we gonna do later? Just to have a second plan because we've, we have seen it, uh, more than once where it's had to, things have had to be, uh, revised. So I just wanted you to, you know, take it a little more heavily than a grain of salt, what they are telling you, even if we do approve it the way it is.
They absolutely, Kimberly Horne absolutely did. Trust me. They did not, they did not take a grain of salt.
If you don't mind if I just add as a representative from Raising Canes is they have over 500 restaurants and the comments and issues that you, you were bringing up are not unfamiliar at all to the company. The two lane drive through, the two order system, the queuing system is all being changed, um, in response, especially to COVID and the additional use on drive-throughs. And so this is the most current, uh, design, um, in response to that additional use to drive-throughs. And then you're seeing that with Chick-fil-A, you're seeing, you're seeing some of these similar designs come, um, with other brands as well. And so we are very aware and also, um, very conscious of the operations of, of the restaurants, um, and the staffing and how it's used. And, and we have talked, um, with planning on, on the dumpster and, you know, we have pushed back because having a dumpster in front of the restaurant is, is not desirable. Having, uh, our trash carried out by the patio is not desirable. Uh, there are certain things. So we've reduced that entrance from a two-way entrance to a one-way entrance. We've made significant changes to the site, um, with all the sidewalks and different things. So I do think we have tried to be very accommodating here on the site, um, with substantial cost we didn't anticipate. So I, I do hope that is taken into, um, consideration that we have tried to, to work, um, uh, very closely with the planning department through this process.
All right. Thank you very much.
I, I guess it's time. I, I would say, I think you're one of the few that's actually committed initially with a two lane drive-through. So I think that I was pretty impressed with that myself. But I guess it's time now for a, uh, motion.
Well.
To be, to be constructed.
I will, um, I will try to attempt to do a motion. I, I'm, I'm gonna move that the Planning and Zoning Commission approves site, uh, development plan S twenty twenty-four, based on the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval provided at the November eleventh, uh, two thousand and twenty-one Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, uh, specifically regarding, uh, landscaping, um, and addressing the three comments uh, related to the design preference mantle, manual in a collaborative manner. Um, and, um, I, I don't really know quite what to, let me pause this for a minute. I, I kind of, Mr. Devoe, let me ask you a question. Let me pause that motion.
Yes.
I don't want to get into, I, I, I think I'd like to leave the whole site exit or that particular issue with the dumpster a little bit open. Uh, but with the, the concept that you kind of heard from the, the, the planning commission, the vibe that I, I think what I heard consistently was that if we couldn't come up with a better, a real, a, a design that worked for everybody, that I, I kind of sensed from the planning commission, we were, oh, we could live with what we were shown. So I don't know that I even want to address that as a condition, but just with a desire that staff and, and the applicant take a fresh look at that. Um, it, it, does the rest of the planning commission feel comfortable with that? Nod your heads if you do. Because we kind of don't know what we're looking at. Um, and I.
I agree. I agree.
My, my desire would be that staff and the applicant work together on that, but I don't really want to put a restriction in there regarding that because it's not clear to me what that would be. Um, anyway, so that's, that's gonna be my motion.
All right, we have a motion.
I'm gonna second it. I'll, I will second his motion.
We have a second? All right. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, you're one commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. One, two. The next item, as I understand it, there may be a, a revision on the agenda for the next item.
Yes, um, that Valvoline, which was to be heard tonight. There was hopes that they would obtain the concept stormwater management approval by the county. As you know, we require that before we come to planning commission because stormwater can certainly alter a design of a site plan. So we do look for that concept approval. And we thought we had it, but unfortunately we found out, um, yesterday that the concept was not approved. So we are asking that that be removed from the agenda tonight. The hope is, and fingers crossed, if we can get that concept approval, we may add it to the, the seven, November seventeenth special hearing meeting that we have scheduled. Um, so again, tonight, we're asking to be pulled off the agenda so we can continue working through that. Don't worry.
Very good. Very good. Then we'll move on to item C. Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan Amendments. Andrea.
Hi, um, so this is actually, I'm reporting on behalf of Carroll County Planning Office. Uh, they were unable to join us today. So this is for a, uh, the Fall twenty twenty-one amendment, and this is something that's done twice a year. And, uh, it's available to everyone in the county. So, um, I, I'm, I do believe that this amendment cycle is more than just us. But, um, just to let you know that the process, they come before us and ask for certification and then they go to their planning commission for certification. Um, approval by their Board of County Commissioners and then, um, MDE for final approval. So we received a request, um, from the dull property. And this is to remove nine point zero zero seven acres, um, out of our service area. They're already out of the sewer service area. So this is just coming out of the water. And it's for a Walnut Ridge subdivision. And although, although it looks like two properties, Estat does qualify, uh, quantify them as one property. Um, it is outside of our corporate limits, just outside. Um, it gets kind of funky out there as far as the boundary. Um, but it is outside of our corporate limits and that's why they do have the ability to come out of our service area. So, um, a property can't develop on well and septic if they are inside of a service area. So I, I don't believe, at least according to the staff report, that the dolls are planning on developing right now. But this is something that they're thinking about for the future. And because it's outside of our corporate limits and according to the Carroll County, um, Planning Office and GIS Office, there are thirty-one buildable units, um, eligible for this property, which equals to approximately seven thousand two hundred and eighty-five gallons. The idea is to take this out into no plan service, also removes, um, that seven thousand two hundred and eighty-five gallons from table fifteen. And Andrew, if you go, uh, table fifteen is one of the most important tables in the water and sewer master plan. Um, it cannot, as you go through, this here talks about present year, priority and future. These correspond to different categories on the water and sewer master plan map, which we were just looking at. Um, they make it very clear that these numbers, uh, your total demand cannot, um, be greater than your plant capacity. So it has to be all equal. And that seven thousand two hundred and eighty-five gallons is coming off of both of the priority and the future. Um, this is, uh, different than our water and sewer allocation policy. And, uh, I just want to say that these two things are different. Um, this property did not have anything on our waters, like within our water and sewer allocation. There has been no water dedicated to this property. That's why they're actually requesting to come out of the service area because we didn't have any intention to serve. Um, what we're asking for tonight is, uh, certification from the planning commission, um, that it is consistent with our master plan. It is, um, our master, we do talk about, and also consistent with our water allocation policy for the fact that we don't have the, like I said, any intention or plans at this point to serve them. So we're going to remove them from our service area so that they can eventually in the future develop residentially.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Can you go to the map that shows the water sewer area? Uh, the second one, the, yeah, the next one down is where, uh, I think it's a Walnut Ridge or Woodside.
Yes.
Is that public water, public sewer?
Yes. So that is currently connected, the pipes, and I'm sorry, I'm not sharing my screen, Andrew is, but if you can, that eight inches that's by, um, the Woodside Drive, that's actually, um, a line that's there. It is currently there. However, with the amount of development that could be potentially on these lots, they, um, there is no allocation that's been set out for thirty-one units. Um, outside of the corporate limits.
So.
This was all, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So it's a little weird because the o- other, the property on the other side is going to eventually be on public water, public sewer, because that's the new development that's coming in. Is that correct? The light blue area.
Yeah, because that, that's all we're gonna be, that's all part of Stonegate, is my understanding.
Yes. So that's gonna be coming in. So we kind of create a little enclave of private well and septic.
So, um, it's my understanding, um, and I, I wasn't here during this time, but the, but Stonegate was able to, um, it does have water in the one times for water and sewer out, in the water and sewer allocation policy. So all of that, um, has, is taken care of, if you will, as far as water allocation. Um, all of the properties to the south, which is in the dark blue have already been, or darker blue, um, have already been connected. And these are properties that are, would have been in priority, that would have stayed in priority because there's no allocation from Stonegate. It's not part of the Stonegate development. And it's already connected. And you know, those areas below are already connected. So, um, there is no, there just is no, uh, allocation available for them. And seven thousand two hundred and eighty-five gallons is more right now than what we have in a year to allocate for development. So it wouldn't be anything that we would be able to provide them essentially in the near future. So that's why.
Does that help our water count situation?
It, it really doesn't change anything for our water count because they were never considered in it in the first place. Which is why they are asking to take, to come out so that they can eventually do something.
I, I, if I could, I think, I think there's somewhat of a benefit though. They, talking to the property owner, um, with Stonegate and the existing development, there's issues with the property itself and, um, the water and sewer service issues. Otherwise, I think Stonegate did look at these properties initially. So they're just not easily developable. And the other element is Andrew pointed out, it's outside the city. So it's not likely that we would want to take on four or five single-family houses to annex into the city in this unusual place. So yes, it does make it a kind of an enclave or unusual situation. But it's not really a comfort benefit for us to contemplate, you know, a lot, you know, large residential or a significant amount of residential development here. We don't think it would happen in the first place. Uh, we don't think you get too many lots here in the first place. It really holds well to well and septic type of development. So.
And Mr. Devoe, correct me if I'm wrong, if we don't grant this, um, we're in essence, the property owner binding them because then they can't develop it on private well and septic because they're in our priority area. They're, they're kind of a catch twenty-two. We can't give them water, you know? And yet if you don't take them out of our priority area, they can't develop. So they're kind of just sitting there in no man's land.
Thank you. That is perfect. And that, that's the property owner's issue for the last decade is that they are in this no man's land. And they can't do anything with it because they can't connect to water and sewer. So that's a very good point. And I, and again, the other benefit too, we're not giving water to properties that are difficult to develop, even outside the city with the water we do have. So.
I also, I also wanted to bring up the fact that this was a, a request that was, um, they originally had come forward in, I believe it was last year's, um, application. And we had said that we were talking, that we would, um, bring it to the Economic Development Committee, which we did. We spoke with them about it. Um, and we said that we would be willing to move it forward. It was at that time that they pushed their request back. They said they wanted to, you know, give it a little bit more time. Um, but, and then they came forward again. So just want to let you know that it's not just like a, a very fast request.
Community development before is what you said.
That, that predated you. Exactly.
Obviously.
Yeah. Cause there, there, I think there was a thought by the property owner, maybe that last final person to see if they could get anybody to, to bite. I'm, you know, the best way to put it, they couldn't. It really is, it's an unusual property, unfortunately. And, and I, I think allowing the property owner to get some use and development out of it, the well and septic is, is worth it.
Well, my one comment, and then I'll let, uh, let the others comment is, I, I don't like the idea that we're kind of creating a little enclave of private well and septic. I don't like it. But on the other side of this, from a property rights standpoint, I, I, I don't feel right saying, no, you can't get out of our priority area. And guess what? We can't give you water either. So just sit there for eternity. Or for however long. I just don't feel like that's right. So.
And I, I just want to reiterate the fact that that is a very similar concern that, um, we, that I had as well. I don't, I don't like to do that as well. Thing is, is that because this is a, the Estat considers this as one parcel. We couldn't even do one and not the other. Um, it, unless you're doing part of it. Um, and that is something that we don't do. But, um, I just want to let you know, and just to remind you that MDE is the one with the final approval also. So even though if we go forward with it and they say that this is something, whether or not they look at it and say they don't agree with it or not, they can always say no as well. So our fine, our yes, uh, planning commission from the counties, yes, and Board of County Commissioners, yes, is not the end of the road. It still has to go through. So.
Are we the first one to say yes? And then it goes to, uh, the county on their planning commission and then the county? And then the county commissioners, correct?
Yes.
At the end of the day, I think, I, I don't, you know, I don't like it, but I don't feel right about saying no to it. But.
And that was essentially the same conversation that we had because we don't have um any, and at this point in time, we don't have the anticipation to serve.
Exactly. That's the same, exactly, same feeling of staff. We had this discussion back and forth, but we just don't see any potential development here by maintaining it within the water and sewer service area either. So.
All right.
Yeah.
Any other commission member comments? Hearing none? Do we have a motion? To, we would need a motion to approve? Is that what we're doing here?
Actually, it's um a motion to certify that it's consistent with the master plan. So we do have a letter that was provided from the county that we would need um a signature for, I guess, um Commissioner Beaver, and then that, that's what we would need for, for this to move forward.
All right. All right.
I make a motion that it's consistent with the master plan.
All right, it's been moved.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
And Mr. Chair, if I may.
What's that?
If I may.
Yes.
If um either tomorrow or early next week, I'll contact you um so we can get the letter signed to get back to the county.
Yes, I, I expect to be in um tomorrow by ten or so. You, you call me. I'll know what time I'll be getting in.
Sounds good.
All right, thanks.
And thank you, everybody, for that.
All right.
Thank you.
Let's see, no old business, any informational items from uh staff?
There's sir, none from me. Just, just, just if the Ravens drop three nothing, that's all, that's all.
That's why the dog was barking.
It looked like we missed an easy touchdown. I don't know how we missed it. Outside of that, three nothing.
Mr. Devo, for the benefit of the planning commission, can I just ask, um, do we have any timeline on when we're gonna go back to meeting live? Because I, I just think that would be very beneficial for the group. Um, you know, do you have any update there?
No, for downstairs, I have no update. Uh I, Dave Davidson's been out of the office for some time, so I can coordinate with him. We could always go back to City Hall now that the TV setup, well, you're familiar with the uh Mayor and Common Council um ability to do Zoom. So we could always have a hybrid situation where we meet at City Hall, still have Zoom for individuals to um to meet or, or speak in front of the planning commission. So I, I'll, I'll really, I'll leave it up to you guys. If, if, if that's the, if you wanna try that, the next meeting, we're, we're happy to do that.
How did the rest of the planning commission feel on that? I, I think it's always beneficial to, to meet in person. I mean, how does everyone else feel?
How does the city do it? You say they do a con, a hybrid?
Well, it, right now, the Mayor and Common Council meet live, and they have a TV setup that they also have a link to Zoom. So anybody that can't make the meeting, they can't, so you would be viewing the large TV and seeing anybody in that Zoom setting to have.
But they still could have the, the applicants there in person if they wish to be.
Yes, yes.
I see, okay.
How does everybody else feel?
I think when we're talking about something uh that is so visual, it is nice to sort of meet in person and to be able to point these things out to one another and make sure that we're literally visually on the same page. Yes.
I would have been there months ago if we could do it.
I agree.
Yeah, no issues meeting in person.
I, I agree.
So Mr. Devo, let's get, let's go ahead. Even if we have to meet at City Hall instead of at forty-five West Main until they get it up and running, it just, it's so hard sometimes with some of these plans to try to like be talking about them online. It's just, it makes my head spin. Um and I think somewhat it's inefficient. And, and just also, it's just nice to be able to all be around each other. Gives us a better feel as a collective and gives us the opportunity to get to, to know each other better and just, it's sometimes everybody's all over each other when you're zooming because you can't see other people in the room, whether they wanna talk or not. And so I, I'd like to go back live if we could.
So what we'll do is next planning commission, City Hall, I'll also reach out to I T and Mr. Davidson to get some idea when we might have a camera, when that, when that's happening um downstairs. We'll also contact the cable service for Carroll County um and have them involved as well. So we'll, we'll move forward with that.
Right.
For next meeting.
One thing, the, the next meeting is actually Wednesday coming up.
I'm sorry, but I'm not so, so when, the seventeenth will do Zoom.
Okay.
And the, the primarily text amendments, the, yeah, December uh your regular meeting, we will do live.
And um just for my clarification, will we still have the option for applicants to be on Zoom?
Yes.
Like, okay.
Yeah.
Because I know that, for instance, for Valvoline, that Mr. Christian is, he's in uh New England. So I just wanted to double check.
Yes, I think that adds the hybrid aspect of it. So yes.
I think that's beneficial. I, I think it's obviously encouraged that if they can be there, but sometimes depending on the applicant, it might not be possible. And, and with mayor and common council, it seems to have worked. Most of the people have been live. But at times, someone's had to be virtual for one reason or the other, and it's, you know, not ideal, but it works. Um so I think we can still let someone be virtual if they need to be virtual.
And just to get one clarification, when we were in live meetings at City Hall, I would um print everybody off a packet. Um and since we've been, we've gone digital through the whole COVID nineteen pandemic, is it all right if we still have everything, except maybe minus the agenda, everything not printed out? So I don't need to burn reams of paper?
I'm, I'm okay. I print mine out when you send them to me. But so that's just me personally.
Well, I know that the common council bring their own laptop. Is that true that they?
We, we bring our own laptop, yes. I've said, I don't know that all our planning commission members.
I normally bring my own iPad, so, yeah.
Tyler Lindy, what, what is your, what, how are you technology-wise?
Yeah.
I have, I have all kinds of stuff, as long as I can get it to work.
So you can bring something portable with you?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, iPads are great because you can download it and have it right there on your iPad. You don't need to link into anything. You just have it ready to go.
Absolutely. I have one.
Good.
Sounds good.
That's, that's it for staff comments?
I have one comment. Um for next month, I'm proposing to bring a final plat for the Planning and Zoning Commission for review and approval. Um and that would be for um the Stonegate development.
Okay.
Another phase of that?
The last one.
The last phase, okay.
I, and if I could real quick, we did have a meeting, and I, I think it's important the planning commission be aware with the Downtown Business Association this past Monday, where we invited uh the businesses of downtown to introduce Sarah and just have a little um meet and greet. And we are continuing that on a monthly basis and other elements, because this is live. And I know a lot of people are watching on Facebook that a lot of things are happening this, at the end of this month. We have um Miracle on Main Street on November twenty-seventh is happening. We have the um uh Small Business Saturday Passport Program. We're gonna have those available with businesses downtown that are participating next week. And that starts on November twenty-sixth and runs to December fifth. We have the Holiday Market, the Stockdale Property on twenty-nine West Main Street, and that starts on the twenty-sixth um of this month. I'm sorry, the passport program starts on the twenty-seventh. I apologize. And we also have the Mayor's Cup Contest decorating storefronts, storefronts happening as well. We hope to have people have their storefronts decorated by the Miracle on Main Street uh so the mayor can walk through and pick um, pick the winners. So again, a lot of things happening in, in, end of this month. Um not, it's never a bad idea, idea to bring it up again.
Thank you.
I just wanna make, make one other comment to all my fellow members on the planning commission. And that's how much, you know, the, the mayor and city council really appreciate your service. Um because sometimes it's hard finding people willing to serve in these positions. Uh and so we greatly appreciate you all being there to do this uh because it's important to have citizens involved in this process. Uh and so, you know, heartfelt thank you. Um because it's not always fun. You know, I, I signed up for it, you know, wisely or unwisely. But um, you know, we really appreciate, you know, our citizens stepping up and to win this kind of stuff. So I just wanna express that to you all. Thank you.
All right. Any other commission member comments, questions? Okay.
I wanna watch the game.
We need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
All right, we are adjourned.
I moved.
Yeah, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.